And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Maniscalco, can you grab a pen and just do a roll call, please, until our clerk, Poma, comes back? Present.
Here.
That's okay. Thank you. Now, the mayor's remarks that I have this evening are, it's Indigenous Peoples' Day on Monday, the ninth, and the town offices will be closed. And down at Wood Memorial Library and Museum on Main Street, there it will be open for anyone who'd like to go down and visit. Nwashi, they have maybe seven performers down there that are going to be teaching about Indigenous people here in Connecticut, and the United States, and South America. So it's very interesting what they have planned for the day. It's also Breast Cancer Awareness Month. As you can see, I'm wearing pink. It was a Barbie outfit that I wore one day to a Barbie party, but I have two uses out of it now. So it's Breast Care Cancer Awareness Month. And please know that we're with the folks and their families as they deal with breast cancer. It's also Depression Awareness Month, and we have, for both of those causes, we have Human Services and anyone can reach out to that may need support. And that would be what phone number? Mr. Maniscalco, please. Eight six four, eight six zero six four eight six three six one. And that you can call Human Services if you need any support concerning any breast cancer, or support for the family, or Depression Awareness Month. Thank you. And now, moving on, the Council Lopez adoption of the agenda. Deputy Mayor King? Oh, is there a second? Is there any changes, additions, solutions, discussion, Deputy Mayor King? Sorry, thank you, there we go.
Yes, so it looks like we need to move Executive Session seventeen A to right after public input, so right after number seven. I have a note here to also move thirteen D, and we're also moving that to after number seven?
Yes.
So we're doing the executive session first?
Yes.
And then we're coming back?
Yes, and doing thirteen D. And could you invite those folks to executive session?
Right now?
Yeah.
Sure.
No, we could, we could, no, not there yet. So is all those in favor? Second on the changes, okay. All those in favor of the changes to the agenda? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, thank you, the motion changes. The motion is accepted. Item number six is communications and reports from the town manager, please.
From a more energy, from a more energy-efficient and comfortable working environment. In terms of our Amazon facility in town, I'm pleased to let the council know that the Amazon Last Mile facility has officially started and working, and is distributing packages throughout our community. This facility was on hold for a while during the Amazon distribution evaluation, and as a result of that evaluation, South Windsor's facility was identified as a continued need for their network. I'm certain we are all pleased to welcome them to our community. In terms of our splash pad update, this project has been turned over to the Department of Public Works. A number of meetings have been held between Rain, between Raindrop, which is the contractor, AquaTurf, which is the subcontractor, and the town. We are in the process of getting this project back on track. Raindrop will be flying staff out to do inspection, to inspect the progress and sign off on it before concrete is poured. Additionally, a new contractor has been brought on to do the utility hookups. At this point, I've still been told concrete can be poured before the winter shutdown, and the feature's installed in the spring. As an additional update, Raindrop has notified us today that they'll be on site for, on the tenth of October, to conduct pressure, pressure testing of the site and to sign off so that the subcontractor can move forward with concrete pouring. And it's our intent that the concrete should be installed and in place prior to Thanksgiving. I also wanted to make everybody aware that the torch walk is going to be held this year. It hadn't been held for a few years. It's going to be held by the Parks and Recreation Department on October twenty first, twenty twenty-three, so keep your eyes out for more information related to that. And lastly, I want to make the council aware that the town of South Windsor is the apparent low bidder for the Vernon leaf collection bid that we've bid on the last couple of years. We actually get paid a sum of money for that bid and for taking Vernon's leaves, and then we also receive payment for composting and selling that compost. So all in all, it ends up being a revenue generator for the community. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that the council may have at this time.
Excuse me, does anyone have any questions for the town manager? Counselor Seracusa?
Who is the new contractor? Can you, can you say that? You said a new contractor's been brought on?
That's just for the utility hookup, that's through ESI locally.
Great, thank you.
Deputy Mayor King, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only question I had, and thank you for your report, is under the splash pad update where it says the project's been turned over to the Department of Public Works, what exactly, what exactly does that mean?
So that's a, so I think if you remember correctly, if you remember back to before, Parks and Recreation was doing the project management for that project. And we kind of ended up a little bit sideways and had some challenges with that. So as a result, what we've done is we've brought Public Works on, through their project management skills, as we've seen through them managing Pleasant Valley Road, and the bridges, and other things that they've done. And they've taken over the project management of that project.
Follow up, Madam Mayor?
Oh, please, go ahead.
So then, with, with that, and I just, just so I'm understanding, so if the Public Works is taking over the project, then who, who pays for that additional effort? So are we getting money from AquaTurf or Raindrop for that?
Well, Public Works is not doing actual work, they're just managing Raindrop and AquaTurf. So no different than like Parks and Rec was doing, they were managing these other contractors.
Okay, so that's probably, so the project has been turned over for management purposes to the Department of Public Works?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, is that right?
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions for the town manager concerning his report or anything else? I have a question, and that is, I would like to approach this Mr. Town Manager with some patience. On social media, there is a post that has inaccurate information concerning a $250,000 fine that we will be fined because we, our budget went over the state statute cap of two and a half percent, or six point one eight, or one three for the cost of living increase. And I believe that's an option, it's one of those two. Is there some way that you could please address that, because misinformation out there is not good for anyone? And I'd really like to clarify all of this, please, if you could?
Sure, so the town of South Windsor hasn't received any fine as of today. We've not been notified that we're going to receive any fine as of today. And, you know, we keep an eye on what comes in from the state of Connecticut in terms of revenue, and our revenue payments from the state of Connecticut are completely spot on as of today. The state legislature passed some legislation, I think five or six years ago, that required municipalities to pass budgets that are either a two and a half percent increase or within inflation, with an inflationary number. Unfortunately, that inflationary number was never described or explained to anybody, and through efforts of the staff and myself, we were never able to get an actual information as to what that, how that inflationary number was determined, or what it was for this upcoming year. There's nothing in the legislation that explains that, and nobody's ever actually started to bump up to that point, at this point. So that's why we notified you when we figured out that we weren't getting that information in a timely manner to, that that was a potential that was out there. And we would keep working on it and trying to identify it. To date, we haven't heard from our state representative or senator as to whether we're actually going to get that fine, or if we're actually going to bump up against the inflationary number, because nobody could actually figure it out. So as of right now, we've not received it. We've received all our payments in accordance with what we are expecting to receive. And if we're notified otherwise, we would let, we would let you know immediately.
And we're not the only community within the state of Connecticut that possibly has violated that state statute with all their, everyone's budget increases in various towns, I take it?
I'm not aware of any others at this red hot moment, but I'm sure, given this last year's financial challenges, I can't imagine we're the only ones, so.
And the other question is, is we really won't know the answer to anything until after the budget closeout? And we're pretty conservative with what we receive, or what?
Budget closeout for, you mean this current fiscal year? Yeah, so we typically budget fairly conservatively when it comes to our revenues that are coming in. So the idea is that even if we did receive a $250,000 fine, we, we are in a financial position to be able to absorb that and continue to move forward just fine.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Is there, go right ahead, Deputy Mayor King?
Just going through my notes, I did want to say, through the report, you have something from the Public Works Department, from Mr. Stetson, in regards to the Yezlebug road reconstruction, as well as the town road paving, the sidewalks, and drainage improvements. Well done, I thought he was in here earlier. Well done, I've been on Yezlebug, I used to live around the corner from here, I remember when it was, when I used to walk, my son is terrible. And now it's, you know, so good job, I'm gonna beat you up on something else later, but, good job on that. But I think, you know, well done needs to be said on both of those, so I appreciate it.
Deputy, Counselor Seracusa?
I just want to clarify about the fine, or there's still a possibility that that could happen. Obviously, I'm glad to hear that we haven't received any penalties or anything yet, but...
Yeah, so that, I mean, we haven't received notice that we're going to receive a fine, we haven't received any penalties. We were surmising potentially we could see it within our revenues that we receive from the state, and we haven't seen that yet. We do get our payments from the state, I believe, twice within the fiscal year. So our first payment came through spot on with where we thought it was. You know, there's going to be that potential out there, because we think that's how they would potentially levy something like that, but we're not really too clear, because I don't, I'm not aware of any municipality historically since that piece of legislation that was put in, that actually bumped up against the budget cap or went over it. So I'm not, to be very frank, the responses that we received from OPM, and even our senator and representative, kind of lead me to believe that they never even contemplated that something like that could happen.
Okay, thank you.
So one of the things that I want to make clear to the public, we have an opportunity for public speaking here in the town hall at a council meeting. However, we can't answer any questions during public input. So the, and we have public input for what's on the agenda, and then we have public input for any other item that you'd like to talk about. If you'd like an answer to your question, we are the advocates for you. That's our job sitting up here, is we're the advocates for the community of South Windsor. If you have a question, please pose your question to one of the council members sitting up here or myself, and we certainly can ask Mr. Maniscalco to answer that question publicly for anyone who asks that question. It's easier to get your questions answered if they're submitted to us before a council meeting, instead of just at public input. Or you can go right directly to Mr. Maniscalco yourself, and that's for all of the public that has any questions whatsoever. So I'd like to just put that out there for all of our residents in the community. Moving on, we now have public input, please, item number seven. Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on any item on the agenda? Public input shall not exceed thirty minutes. When recognized by myself, and you approach the lectern, give your name and address. And speakers shall avoid personal attacks or impugning alleging improper motive to any person. The speaker may address the council on any item on the agenda. The speaker shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. Good evening.
Good evening, Tom Dillon, thirty-four Barber Hill Road. I want to talk to you about two issues tonight. One of them is public input. What you have here under seven, starting with speakers shall avoid personal attacks, along with the whole page of page three, is in violation of the U.S. Constitution. I'm glad the attorney's here, I've mentioned it in the past to you. You do not have the right to stop my free speech, with the exception of very few issues. If I scream fire in a movie theater, if I make threats against you. But I can impugn your character and allege any improper motive that I want to. That's my constitutional right. That should be struck from the agenda. It wasn't here up until the last three or four years, maybe even two years. This gives the perception that you have the right to stop someone's free speech. You do not. Someone else that might be a little more timid might come in here and say, oh, I can't speak about this because I'm going to get in trouble or I'm going to get shut down. This appunes, this, this says to me, to a, to a person that you can't have complete and free speech, and that should be struck from the agenda. Item number two I'd like to talk about is four sixty Miller Road you have on the agenda about a resolution settling litigation. What's in your, resolution is a little misleading. This goes, this says, whereas on October two thousand seventeen, the town and its zoning official brought us an action. This actually goes back to two thousand fourteen, nine years ago. Then-town manager Matt Galligan started talking with the residents of that home about blight and running a business out of the property. He then cleaned up the property against their wishes, at least one time. Cleaned up the side yard. I think he went in a second time, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. I know he went in the first time. So then the fire came in two thousand sixteen, where the house burned down, and it was still a blighted property, and then it turned into a full-fledged junkyard. What used to be just some stuff around the house, the home, and in the garages in the first floor, was then the whole property was a junkyard. So I commend the council and Mr. Galligan at that time for taking this on, because it's been, I'm sure, paying in behind for the town. It's been probably at least $70,000 in lawyer's fees to the town. So when I saw the resolution, I was kind of like, well, it looks like we're paying them $120,000 to go away, we're settling. That's actually not the case. The case is that, I want to say, two thousand twenty-one or so, this case was heard in the court. You'd have, I'd have to look at the docket, I didn't. The judge found, every time it's gone to a court or a hearing, we've succeeded in winning. The only time that we haven't is that the town at that time hired an attorney who ignored the judge's rulings and directions, and continued to try to go after them for some fees that he had said, nope, we're squashing it. So the town was fined, or excuse me, totally, the judge awarded them $120,000. Hundred thousand dollars is supposed to have come from lawyer, and $20,000 was awarded to Matt Galligan. Now, Matt Galligan, we've talked about it, Matt Galligan hired an expert, the attorney. So if the attorney didn't follow the directions of the judge, that's on the attorney. I would hope that when you decide tonight, when you, if you release, and you settle it, you release the funds that I believe are in escrow, that you go after the attorney for the hundred thousand dollars out of his malfeasance policy. The only reason that this person was awarded any money was because of malfeasance by the previous attorney. I would hope that you do not pay for it out of taxpayer funds. The $20,000 are going to come from the taxpayer. But I would hope that you would not, when you settle, where the money's going to come from, that attorney ignored the judge. The town didn't, the council didn't. And if the attorney didn't do his job, he should be held accountable. So.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon.
It's nice that it's finally going to be over. The other thing, though, the property looks like crap. I hope that we're going to talk with them and get that resolved, or start fining them for blight again. Because the weeds and the grass are about two and a half feet tall. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak to the council on any item on the agenda? Second time, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to the council on any item on the agenda? Third time, anyone from the public would like to speak to the council on any item on the agenda? Not seeing anyone, thank you. I'll be moving on to item seventeen A, please. Deputy Mayor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we go into executive session to discuss the pending litigation regarding four sixty Miller Road. I'm inviting the town manager, Michael Maniscalco, as well as the assistant town manager, Mr. Roberts, as well as attorney Howing. After which, we'll come back and move forward with the rest of our...
Let's take a vote on that first, is there a second? Second? Okay, any discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, and one more, please?
Nope, we're just...
Nope, just that, okay. And we will return. Patience, and we're back and calling the regular meeting back to session. Counselor Lydecker, 13D, I mean Counselor Alango, 13D, please.
13D, resolution settling litigation regarding 460 Miller Road. Whereas on October 24, 2017, the town and its zoning enforcement officer brought an action for zoning compliance and injunction against the property owners of 460 Miller Road with regards to blight and zoning violations on the property. And whereas the Supreme Court entered judgment in favor of the town on February 14, 2019, enjoining the use of the property for commercial purposes and awarded damages and attorney fees against the owners. And whereas the award of damages was appealed to the Connecticut Appellate Court, which reversed the trial court in part and remanded the matter for a new trial. And which decision was further appealed by the town to the Connecticut Supreme Court, which reversed the trial court and appellate court and remanded the matter for a new trial limited to the measure of damages. And whereas on June 3, 2019, one of the property owners commenced litigation against the town and the United States Bankruptcy Court, resulting in an award in the favor of the property owner in the amount of $120,144.61, and which limited the amount of offsetting damages in the town's zoning enforcement action against the property owner. And whereas on January 18, 2022, town and property owner agreed that the town would deposit the $120,144.61 into the bankruptcy court in full satisfaction of the bankruptcy court award for the property owner, pending the further resolution of award of damages in the town's zoning enforcement action. And whereas the parties mediated their remaining disputes regarding damages in the town's zoning enforcement action before the Honorable Susan Connor on July 12, 2023 mediation, which resulted in a settlement in which the town will recoup as a set of the sum of $30,000 from the $120,144.61 being held by the bankruptcy court, with the remainder being dispersed for the benefit of the property owner in full and final satisfaction of all claims between the property owner and town except for the enforcement of the court's injunction and the ongoing liens for real estate taxes, which both remain intact. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of South Windsor authorizes the town manager to execute a settlement and release agreement in accordance with the above terms and any other documents necessary to effectuate such settlement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Deletions, corrections, additions? Not seeing it. Are you done? You can turn your light off. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any? Thank you. The motion carries. And now moving on, going back to the beginning of our agenda. We are now on item number eight. Counselor Alango, for the adoption of the minutes, please, from the previous meeting.
Adoption of minutes for previous meetings. Approval of September 5, 2023 Town Council Meeting Minutes. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the regular Town Council Meeting of September 5, 2023.
Is there a second? Is there any corrections, additions? Counselor Syracuse.
In others present, the town attorney, Richard Corella, was left off.
On the September 5th, others present, he's there.
Oh.
Are you looking at the 18th by chance?
Yes, I am. You're right.
Okay, so he is here on the fifth.
Okay, beautiful.
Okay. Any other corrections, deletions, additions?
This is for September 5th, right?
Yes, September 5th.
The only one I have is you just put my name. That's all.
You're missing.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Anitha, do you have an addition?
Oh, the next one.
Oh, okay.
Do we have to vote on it separately?
Yes, separately.
Yeah.
All those in favor of the September 5th corrected minutes? Aye. Any opposed? Not seeing any? Thank you. That motion carries. And then moving on to the September 18th, please.
Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the regular Town Council Meeting of September 18, 2023.
Is there a, thank you. And that was Deputy Mayor King. Is there any additions, corrections, deletions on this one? Counselor Syracuse.
Now I'd like to add Richard Corella, the town attorney, as others present, onto that list.
He was here, right? Yeah, he was here. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any? Thank you. The motion carries. And please make sure for this evening's, Counselor Poma, for the minutes of this evening would be Attorney Howing. If you can get one of his business cards to attach him, put him in there. Thank you. I said it correctly, attorney. Okay, moving on. We now have item nine, which is the communications from liaisons, officers, and boards directly responsible of the council. Planning and zoning, Counselor Kozakowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to report that the Planning and Zoning Commission had a regular meeting last Tuesday where they approved a site plan for a residential development at Evergreen Wall consisting of 165 residential units across, I believe, 12 buildings and a community building and other associated spaces. And that's, that's the most, you know, of public interest.
Thank you. Agricultural Commission, Counselor Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's nothing to report. The next meeting will potentially be in November.
Good evening, just to let everybody know that the Capital Projects Committee started off its year at September twentieth with its first meeting, just to get going on where we stand with all the activities over the summer as projects have closed. We also gave a quick report that we did procure the new software for ClearGov that'll allow us to integrate capital projects with the transparency dashboard of the digital budget book. That's in implementation and hopefully at the next meeting we'll have more to show. Also, we did give a report that we're going to try to get our numbers together for Patty earlier than we did the previous year to just help out with the budget process. So we're just at the early phases. We also anticipate we could have a few changes after the election, so if that's the case then we may have to, you know, just change up a little bit, but we will have our list ready in advance.
We also received a report from our facilities manager, Mr. Clay Majors, Department of Facilities, the Building and Facilities, on a evaluation that would happen a lot faster than we originally thought by the company that would be hired to do such a thing. And that would allow us to get a breakdown and add information into our ClearGov budget process of when items need to be replaced. If a new boiler went in last year and it's only good for twenty years, we can put that in the budget to know where we're heading down the road. A new roof gets put on, it's twenty-five year replacement, we can add that information in there too. So they're gonna go around, collect all that data, everything that needs to be done and submit that information, that's gonna be done a lot faster than what we originally thought, which is great.
Yes, that's true.
Is there any questions? Not seeing any, thank you. Moving on, we have Inland Wetlands Agency, Deputy Mayor King, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the meeting is tomorrow.
Thank you. Patriotic Commission, myself. I had a meeting with the Patriotic Commission last Monday evening and I brought the information that Mr. Kupchun has brought to us concerning Thomas Jurgulis, a patriot here in South Windsor, to the Patriotic Commission in that it's a conversation that they're going to be addressing at their monthly meeting here in October. Economic Development Commission, Deputy Mayor King.
Yes, the next meeting is on November fifteenth at seven P M.
Thank you. Insurance Control Commission, Mr. Meniskalco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we did not have a quorum for that meeting unfortunately, but we did send out the documents that were provided to us by our insurance consultants to the members that were not present, so.
Thank you. Is there any reports from committees? Not seeing any, thank you, we'll be moving on.
Oh, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
On the twenty-sixth of September, the library board met, I was unable to attend, but Director Kevin Sullivan sent me an email with a recap. Out of respect to him, I'd like to read what he said.
Please.
Two new staff members have been hired since the August meeting, a full-time reference librarian and a part-time Sunday librarian, library assistant. Both individuals are doing very well in their positions and the children's and adult services departments are excited to have the extra help. The Friends of the Library received a grant to purchase some technology for the library that will allow patrons to digitize old photos and videos and equip the seminar room to host hybrid virtual and in-person meetings. The Children's and Teen Library finished a successful summer reading program in August. From mid-June through the end of August, the department put on one hundred and twenty-six events with two thousand, two hundred and fifty-two participants. That is an incredible accomplishment for a department of this size. The library is currently projected to exceed its personal budget, personnel budget by about twenty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. Administration has already made thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars worth of cuts of, of services to reduce the deficit to its current state. Creative solutions are being sought, but it is possible that hours may have to be reduced to make ends meet. Reduced or cut services include Hoopla, Mango Languages, World Book, Morning Star, EBSCO Novelist, Scholastic and its magazine collection.
Could you please do me a favor and have our clerk make copies of that, so we can all have a copy of that, please?
She's got it in her, in her email.
If you could just email that to us, that would be fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, is there any other reports from any boards or commissions? Not seeing any, thank you. Item number ten is reports from committees, we have none. Item number, let's move on here, flip the page. Item number eleven, consent agenda, first reading, second reading and miscellaneous, A, B and C, we have none. Item twelve is unfinished business, implementation of the strategic plan. Counselor Kozakowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so based on the late night last meeting, we pushed the discussion to this meeting for this. So as you probably well remember, and thank you to our clerk for providing another copy of the strategic plan in our packages, but the council approved a two thousand and twenty-three update of the strategic plan for the town of South Windsor. And there's, that plan goes through various objectives for how we want to grow and address quality of life issues in the, in the town of South Windsor. Some of these goals and objectives under these priorities as listed here, some of them are very specific, some of them are more general, some of them are kind of, kind of quick fixes, one-offs, some of them take a lot of long-term planning to implement. So the next step, we, we have this great plan, but the next step is how are we going to develop strategies for implementation of, of this plan? So I'd like to, you know, have, hear some, you know, feedback from, from fellow counselors, feedback from the town manager and just what we can do to make sure that this plan doesn't get forgotten, it doesn't get put on the shelf, but is in the forefront of the decisions we make as a council and kind of as, and used as a guide for our town manager and town staff to, you know, do their daily, you know, do their daily duties. So I don't know, town, town manager, would you mind, have you get, since we, since we've adopted this in July, have you given consideration on how you might want to go about implementation?
Sure, so one of the, one of the things we've done in prior years, we haven't done it in the most recent year because we've, we're in the process of doing this new plan, but in prior years, using the old plan, we typically, when doing the budget, would tie the different objectives within the strategic plan to different funded items within the budget. So it's fully my expectation that myself and the staff this year, when we go and put the budget together, are gonna put together a nice big spreadsheet that's gonna show you the different parts of the budget and how they're actually tied to the different priorities within the, within the plans, that way we could show how we're actually funding and implementing the plan on a year-over-year basis moving forward.
In the past, have you provided any type of reports to the council on how, you know, how, how you're doing on this or like what, you know, progress on any of these objectives? Or is that something that's feasible?
I don't think we have, we certainly can, moving forward, it wouldn't be challenging.
Exactly, I think on some of the items warrant, you know, report, because like I said, some of them are, or is a long-term strategy for implementation. And it'd be nice to, to get a report, whether it's, you know, quarterly or, or some appropriate duration where we can make sure that some of these priorities are, are being, being implemented. And thank you for bringing up coordinating, like, spent, projects as it relates to the plan. What I think that we could do as a council to keep this fresh in our minds is whenever we have a rev, a resolution for us that involves some sort of allocation of funding or other resources, directly in our resolution, make reference to this plan to make sure that it's, you know, it's always in our, in our forefront too. And make sure that any financial decisions that we make is also tied to this plan. I don't know if anybody has any comment on that or if, you know, it's dead in the water.
No, those, those are great ideas. Deputy Mayor King?
Yeah, the only thing that I was gonna suggest, and thank you, Counselor Kozakowski, for bringing this up, is, is it possible, because we don't want it to be, bootstrapped is not the word, but held back because we may not have things in our current budget? Is it possible, and this thought just, just occurred to me, and I don't know who would do it, but if we were to figure out if we had a grant person that was specifically tasked to find grants for all of these different items, by which, hey, you know what, I looked through everything, there's not a grant for X, okay? So let's see, then we can go back to our budget as opposed to doing it the other way around. And I think sometimes if we had someone that was specific to that task, and I know that's probably something that financially, I don't know if it's under miscellaneous or what, but it shouldn't take that long per se to go through this and then say, hey, you know what, we can find grant money for this, we can find grant money for that, we can find grant money for this, then give that report to you, to us, and then we can go to the budget and say, okay, we don't have free money for these items, we will have to pay for these. So I guess my question would be, after saying all of that for a foundation, is it possible to either tax, task someone or heaven forbid if we had to hire someone part-time, that that was all you did all day is focus on finding grant money for the strategic plan? So I believe the prob, if we had somebody, it, I'm sure would pay off.
We don't, what I would say is currently in the staff that we do have for the town, we don't have somebody that's able to stop doing what they're currently doing to focus even half of their time towards just pursuing grants, whether it's associated with the report or not. I mean, there's, if somebody's doing a full-time job within the town, they have a full-time job's worth of activities to do on a daily basis, if probably not even more than a full-time job's responsibility. That said, we could certainly talk about looking at a part-time position in next year's budget, if that was something you would be interested in funding or seeing how that looks in the upcoming year. So we certainly could look at that. Some of the items within the plan don't actually require funding, it's more bigger picture, long-term, like maybe we should do things focused more on this direction rather than that direction, which are, have no cost to them. Or maybe the cost associated with them is something that we typically fund through the budget anyways, it's just a matter of doing it slightly different. So we certainly can look at doing those things as well, but I, I think I kinda answered what you were looking for, I hope, so.
That's, yeah, that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Syracuse.
Were you talking about hiring somebody in regards to that person to keep us accountable of this or was that for something else?
That was just to seek grants associated.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, cause I, I believe that it's your job and all of our jobs.
It's all our jobs.
Preserve that. Are we doing anything to make sure that we keep it current and fresh and not just, you know, having this be our, our bible for X amount of years? You know, what's the process in reviewing that? Because I know it seems like, this chart here, are we gonna be talking about that with the sidewalks?
No, that's separate.
Okay. Cause I'm, I'm looking at this here and overwhelmingly, the number one answer is preserving undeveloped land for open space, and I know we have that as priority too. How often are we looking at this to, to keep it up to date and putting, I think these surveys are great to hear what the town wants.
Sure, so I think the prior strategic plan was probably over ten years old when we undertook this process and I know some of the council members up there that participated in this process, it was, this was, this was no small task. I, I think my hope would they, would be probably when we hit year five, we start talking about doing an update to it, not throwing everything out, but doing an update. And when we hit year ten, probably doing a whole redo, just to take a fresh look at it again. So that, that's kind of my thoughts in terms of the strategic point, cause I really am looking at it as this is a big picture direction, not making small day-to-day corrections, if that makes sense.
And then in regards to the accountability factor, how, how does that look in your mind? Is that prior to every decision being made? Is it weekly, monthly? What, what does that look like for you?
You mean accountability of implementing it?
Yeah.
Sure.
Using this as, you know, something.
Yeah, I mean, I think when we go and we turn around and look at it in association with our, our budgeting process, we can, after our budgeting process is put in place, we'll have those items associated with the budget that show where things are funded, we can go through those, those are actually probably the easier parts to say, hey, we got this done or no, we didn't, because there'll be resources associated with it and it'll get implemented. In terms of some of the other items that are kind of bigger picture, let's do this a little different, let's do that a little different, I think those are gonna have to be some of those conversations I have with my department heads during performance evaluations, those are gonna be, be conversations, you know, all of us have during even my evaluation. So I think that's kind of how we.
Thank you.
Make that happen.
Counselor Alango?
The, you know, idea of having someone for the express purpose of writing grants, I'm sure every department has its own expertise, which someone else may not be aware of, like the Board of Education is pretty skilled at getting its own grants, I'm sure, you know, the Health Department is skilled at getting its own grants, so I'm not quite sure how hiring a multipurpose person is going to work out. They may not just know about every field under which they could apply grants for, so just a comment.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Meniskalco, I'm happy to see this, did you take the last strategic plan and do a review of that before creating this one to find out what was missing, what we didn't accomplish, what needs to be brought over?
Yeah, I know the committee spent a lot of time reviewing the previous one, in, in terms of what was done on it as well as even the form of it. And, you know, I know things that were on that previous plan kind of formed the framework for some of the questions that were asked and directions that were taken to get to where we are on this one.
And looking at this gives you, like, it was referenced as a bible for the town and to accomplish things, if, if you could, and I'm gonna ask this ask, it could be a big one, is, you know, cause the mayor's never done, is take our strategic plan, take the Board of Ed's master plan, take Capital Project, take our economic development and put it all together and come up where the town is headed over the next five years and give a real good in-depth report over the, at, at the three-year mark, mark from today, three years come back and say, this is where we're at, this is what we've accomplished with all of those, cause all of those impact our community, all of those impact, capital impacts our community, Board of Ed, their master plan impacts us, our strategic plan, our economic development, if you could put all that together in one, tied up with a little bow, and three years from now and give us a report, and then on the fifth year, give us another, where are we at? Where are things with this one and where are things with that, and just bring it all together in one big package. I don't know if that makes sense to anyone else, what I'm trying to say, do you understand what I'm saying, Mr. Meniskalco? Like you would be the over, over the town in what's happening everywhere. We have open space in here, we also have recreational needs in here, the Board of Education might have it, so like if we can get it all together and review the whole thing all together, instead of being fragmented, if we could pull it all together, that would be great. Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Alango?
This is more, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure how exactly those things will work, but I was just curious about can the strategic plan be used to guide, say, the P N Z, for example? If we have some warehouses coming in, can we, is there anything specific that we can use in the strategic plan to deny them, you know?
So not in the strategic plan, they, the Planning and Zoning Commission is doing their plan of conservation and development, so that's a little bit different from that perspective, but there's nothing directly in the plan or even, in all honesty, from a legal perspective, P O C D, I don't believe can even be used to just deny some type of development. That would be a regulation requirement that they would need to have.
That would be another one you could pull in as a plan of conservation and development, because we talk about conservation, so you could pull that. Um, so you could pull that one into, get them all together and create one big package for where we're heading for the next five years. So that would be great. Thank you. Any other comments? Not seeing any, we'll move on to item. Thank you for bringing this forward for the in-depth conversation. Um, item 13, new business, please. Deputy Mayor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution, uh, changing the planning department's approved budgeted title of Assistant Director of Planning slash Economic Development Coordinator to Assistant Planner. Uh, whereas in the 2023, 2024 fiscal year budget, the town council approved the hiring of an Assistant Director of Planning slash Economic Development Coordinator. And whereas it has been determined that this position is not attracting applicants with the combined title. And whereas this position would be most fitting as a supervisory role with the title of Assistant Planner. And whereas the town has an approved title of Assistant Director of Planning, Grade Five, listed in the approved non-bargaining job classification schedule that the Assistant Planner title will replace. And whereas there was a consensus of council members at the September 18th, 2023 town council meeting, that it would be in the best interest of the town to hire an Assistant Planner at the budgeted salary of $100,000 to properly fill the department for succession planning. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves changing the budgeted position title from Assistant Director of Planning Econo, slash Economic Development Coordinator to Assistant Planner and replacing the Assistant Director of Planning title with the title of Assistant Planner on the non-bargaining job classification schedule.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Counselor Ser, uh, Kozakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just, uh, question on the third whereas clause where it says, um, this position would be most fitting as a supervisory role. Um, who would this pers, who would somebody in this position be supervising?
Um, so it would be supervisory of the office staff. So there's, um, I believe there's a, uh, administrative assistant in the office as well as, uh, another part-time position that's doing zoning enforcement. So the, the intent would be that this role would be somebody over a period of time who could potentially transition the department, um, when we do find that our planner decides to retire. So we want them to, uh, be comfortable in that supervisory, um, experience and position moving forward as well.
Okay. Counselor Sarkozy?
I know we discussed last meeting that potentially, once that person steps into the planner role, um, it's potentially that Assistant Planner would become more of a minor, uh, somebody that's inexperienced. The thought would be that they work under the current planner over a number of years, kind of like our planner now. Uh, have you kept that in mind, that discussion we had, you know? And have you thought to lowering the salary when that does happen?
Yeah, so what we wanted to do to ensure that we have, uh, flexibility within the marketplace, cause it's pretty hard to find planners nowadays, as I'm sure Counselor Kozakowski can tell you. Um, we wanted to transfer over the amount of money that was within the budget, but our ultimate goal is to probably advertise it, um, with a salary of around $80,000, somewhere in that ballpark. Um, that may be on the low side. It might be on the high side. We're not 100% sure just yet. But kind of to be in that amount, uh, in that range with the intention of, uh, being able to save some money and we could return back to taxpayers.
Okay, but is the goal eventually to get that salary down to more of an entry-level position after that succession happens?
So are you me, are you saying that we're talking about keeping this position long-term? Like, after, oh, okay. So, I mean, using my crystal ball, I don't know whether we would even fill, fill this pe, position back. I, I don't know how that's all gonna work, you know? We'd have to, that's all up in the air at this hot moment, so.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Kozakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, as far as the budgetary salary of $100,000, I, I think that is high for an Assistant Planner, but I would, I'm fine with offering the flexibility of going up that high. If necessary, if the ideal candidate shows up, we wanna, we wanna hire the best person for the job. And if that person warrants more salary, then, then so be it, up to, you know, a specified number. Um, the one part of this resolution that I'm just not comfortable with, um, is, um, using words for succession planning. Um, I don't want a candidate applying or sitting in this position, um, feeling like they're, you know, anointed on day one to fulfill a position that may happen some, at some point in the future. Um, I don't think that's fair to that person. I don't fair, I think that's fair to the, uh, you know, the incumbent. Um, so if, you know, if, if that part of kind of the recruiting process, whether it's, whether it needs to be in this resolution or whether it's, you know, in the recruiting process, I think I would prefer that to be, you know, stricken. I'll, I'll leave that to, to you and, uh, you know, Mrs. Parry, to, uh, address. But, um, I don't, I don't want somebody coming in thinking that, you know, they're, they're the, the, the one to, for the next, you know, for the next town plan.
Sure. And I, I think it's important to note that, um, as I've gone through hiring processes for any department heads who've retired or resigned, uh, during my tenure, uh, I've made it my practice to open almost every single one of those up to the public and have national searches for almost all of them. Uh, some of those searches have turned out that, you know, our best candidate is internal. Um, and some of them have turned out that, no, they're not, and we've hired people from outside, so. Um, even if it was somebody internally that we had hired that's looking to apply to this job, they would still have to go through some type of open process that would, you know, put them against everybody else. Cause I've, I personally believe it's my, it's my responsibility to put the, uh, the best, most qualified individual in that job that can serve the community to the absolute best that we can find.
Thank you.
Counselor Lopez? Want to say anything? You're good? Okay. Go ahead. Counselor Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I wouldn't hire, wanna hire anybody who doesn't have that one or feel or, or expectation that is gonna be moving on to the next tier. Um, so having that expectation that this is a, a, a road to a higher-tier position means that the development of that person, it becomes critical and part of the performance of that person throughout the tenure.
May, Mayor.
Counselor Kozakowski?
Um, I, I, I agree. Um, people, a candidate, an employee should have an expectation of themselves to aspire, to move up and grow and, and, and do, do more things. Um, but I think that expectation should be coming from internal, not from the employer dangling, you know, some sort of carrot in front of a candidate to say, hey, if you come on, you know, you'll get this. And, and that's, you know, I, I think that's a false guarantee.
If I could just clarify a little bit, this position is getting filled again because we're looking for succession planning. That's why it was created. Over all these years that it has not been filled, this position has always been there because the person sitting as a planner right now was an Assistant Planner and moved into that position. She has not had an Assistant Planner for years. We're not hiring an Assistant Planner because she needs an Assistant Planner. We're hiring an Assistant Planner for the succession planning, getting them into place for the experience to learn, learn the town. That is the point, that we've refilled this position or putting applications out there for that. If that's not the reason for doing this, then why would we even offer this position as an Assistant Planner and just not hire, would let her retire and hire a new planner? I mean, that's what we're trying to do here, is the succession planning of hiring an Assistant.
Well, correct. We're trying to do that, but also I think it's important to note that the town of South Windsor is a very busy community when it comes to planning and zoning and economic development. And, um, it is our intent that that department does not skip a beat in that transition.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So, um, a lot of development occurs and it's on timelines. There's, uh, requirements associated with planning and zoning, that certain things have to be seen and heard within a certain period of time. Builders and developers come to us and they're running on timelines associated with budgets and the costs of their developments. And we can't afford to lose the reputation that we have amongst those communities as a great place to do business. So I think that's, that's, while I agree with you, you know, this is to help, you know, with that whole scenario, but I, I do think it's, it's even bigger than that. It's about our reputation as a community within the development and building world.
I understand that. Mr. Maniscalco, and if, let us just say that we have, we hire an Assistant Planner, and that Assistant Planner does not wanna become the Director of the Department or the Planner of our town, and they wanna say an Assistant Planner, but we need, would they be qualified to do the job of the Planner? And/or would we hire a Planner and eliminate that person that's the Assistant Planner? Because they don't wanna go on. They don't wanna move up. I mean, I don't, I don't perceive us seeing an Assistant Planner position being filled down the road. It hasn't been for years. So to save the town $100,000, let's, if we had to, just go to a Planner. Let's hire a Planner if this person didn't wanna do it. So they should know the expectation, I think, coming in, because you're, you're gonna have to deal with it after the fact. Cause we've done it for so long with the one person. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I do understand that.
Counselor Kozakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess just one more kind of sum up question. Does the current workload in the department and the demand for services in, for that, for that department warrant a new full-time Assistant Planner?
I, I know Ms. Lipe is here, uh, and in conversation I've had with her, as well as I believe the last time when she was here, uh, it was her feeling that she's more than busy enough to have the additional hands on deck and, uh, help in her office.
Thank you.
So going forward, both positions would be filled, a Planner and an Assistant Planner?
I can't make you a promise one way or the other today. I mean, you're talking about something three to five years from now, so.
Well, come on, come on. I didn't know you were here. I'm sorry. Director of Planning, Michelle. Thank you.
Michelle Lipe, Director of Planning. Um, I think one of the benefits of having an Assistant Planner is, as I have done the job as the sole Planner for a while now, although I don't wanna, Jeff Folgers in my office and Pam Alaba, there's a lot of things that we don't do anymore that we used to do. And I think some of the things, um, you know, just to give you a very simple example, we used to do a lot of simple economic development things, like tracking how much construction happened square footage-wise. We had a much more robust relationship with the Chamber, things like that. Um, in, in those kinds of things, you know, I had to pick and choose when, with my time, you know, where I was gonna put my energy. So there are some things that don't get done that were done when we did have an Assistant Planner. Looking forward, I think one of the areas that we talked about is the housing area. And I really would hope whatever, uh, person comes into this position, we could help develop our housing goals. You know, we're gonna have a housing committee that's gonna have a Planner as part of the, the staff to that. Um, so there, there's, there's areas to branch out and expand that we just really haven't had the opportunity to do. Um, I'm not saying that we're just reactionary up there, but, um, you know, we're a busy organization and the ones of us up there have been doing it for 20 and 30 years. We do it with our eyes closed some days. And I just really think that, um, if we can get somebody in here that can really learn the ropes, maybe they'll be the person to move up, but if they're not, they'll be the person to bridge the department as we move forward. So I, I personally think there's plenty of work to, um, hand off to someone and still keep myself very busy.
So if, may I ask you then, if this person chooses not to move up to the Director of the Planner and chooses to stay at the, as the Assistant Planner, then we would have to hire a Planner. Um, and this person would be the Assistant, but you're, you're warranting, or you're stating that there is enough work in that department to have both, an Assistant Planner and a Planner, especially if we had a new person coming in as a Planner?
I, I feel that we do, yes.
We do. Cause we haven't had an Assistant Planner for how many years?
Uh, let's see. I think I had this position for 12 years, so probably 12 years.
That's what I'm saying, you've been doing alone for 12 years. Good job. So that's why, good job. Um, so that's why I'm saying, in, in moving forward, would we need both at that time? I understand you're a, you know, a one-woman show up there, so, um, I don't have, I just want it to be clear with everyone here.
Yep, no, I, I appreciate that.
That we're looking for both, that we will be looking for possibly both positions moving forward. I don't know. Is that fair?
Yeah, it's hard to say, you know, so again, if you hire someone, and when I do leave, who knows when that'll be? Um, maybe that person's got all the skill set that you want to be able to take over the Director and we're not busy enough to have an Assistant Planner. You might want someone with a different skill set than the Assistant Planner has for your Director. I mean, it's really hard to tell, as we are a growing community, where our, you know, our focus may, I mean, we're, we're obviously community development generally, but you might want someone that has a little more of an urban feel to it, you know? So I, I think you wanna kind of be a little bit flexible moving forward.
Okay.
Um, that's why I think the range that we hire at, I can appreciate, um, what Counselor Kozakowski said. Yeah, if we've got someone really great, yeah, 100,000, but my intention really is more to get someone that's a little bit of, you know, more of a junior planner, so someone that we can get in here and really kind of teach them how we do things in South Windsor, so that we can, again, try to.
And now, once that person's into position, they may or may not need an Assistant Planner?
Correct.
Okay. So asking for that flexibility, asking, the goal maybe here is to, in this for succession planning is the goal, we should write the word, do the goal, to, for succession planning. Counselor Kozakowski? If you wanna reword that, maybe that's the goal, and if they don't choose to reach that goal, that's their choice, I suppose. But I want it clear with everyone that that's what we're talking about with these two positions. And introducing the one and then possibly the two. Do we understand that? Do you wanna put in a, oh, change that last sentence there? Or how do you feel about that?
I'd put in a change, but I don't think it's what you wanna see. So, um, if you could direct your con, direct a revision to another counselor.
Okay.
Probably be better.
Okay. Deputy Mayor King?
I was just gonna call for the question.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we've discussed this ad nauseam, unless there's a specific way that we need to rephrase it. I think everybody's kind of giving their opinions on it. Um, I think that we have an understanding that unless someone appears named Jesus Christ or God, that we don't know what's going to happen five to 10, to 15 to 20 years from now. And I think that with everybody's input, I agree, we may not need it. But at least this does give us the benefit and the flexibility to say, you know what? If we have one, then cool. If we don't, then we don't spend the money. But if we do, then we can make that higher accordingly.
And we are definitely going with $100,000 to fill this position, or is it up to Mr. Maniscalco?
Up to.
Up to? It should say up to in the resolution, please? If we can make that friendly amendment just to that?
I, I honestly don't think you need that, because that's the money we have available within the budget.
Oh, that's the money in the budget for it? Okay.
That's all there is.
Okay. Well, that doesn't mean you have to use it all.
We're planning not to.
Okay, good, good. Okay. So everyone's good to go with that? Okay. All those in favor? Thank you.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Moving on, um, and that is 13B, discussion item, sidewalk installation on Birch Hill Drive and Felton Road, please.
That's me. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, resolution for the installation of sidewalks on Birch Hill Drive and Felton Road. Is this a discussion or reading?
Yeah, we're gonna discuss it first, the discussion item. 13B, the discussion item. Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and fellow counselors.
Pull your microphone closer, please.
Mike, if you could hear me, can you turn on the screens? Thank you. So Ms. Lydecker isn't here, but we had the opportunity to perform the survey that she was requesting. And I have the results here to share with all you guys. How do we do this? Slide this over? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry about the delay there. There's only three of them, so. Um, here we have the summary of the overall survey results. We sent out 302 letters to residents in South Windsor, um, in a 2,000-foot radius of Valley View and Birch Hill. We received a total of 139 responses and 234 did not respond. For Birch Hill, the overall neighborhood response is 683 responses for yes and 49 responses for no. I mean, you can see the percentages there. And then we parsed out the data for just residents that live on Birch Hill Drive. And, um, you almost have a 50-50 split there with 12 residents saying yes and 11 residents saying no. We did the same exercise for Valley View, and 89 responses, yes, 45, no. And then nearly a 50-50 split for the residents that live specifically on Valley View, with 11 no and 10 yeses. Like to give a quick shout-out to the ID Department, Thad and Scott. And they really did a lot of good work with the GIS and the QR code. Um, we were able to make sure that nobody double-voted. Um, we had a lot of paper votes come in as well. And just really appreciate the collaboration and assistance that they gave us to make this pretty painless. Any questions?
Yes, could you just give us a minute to look at the document that you gave us, gave us earlier this evening? Because we haven't had a chance to over, to look that over yet. I think we're all kind of perusing that, just give us a second on that.
Sure.
Thank you.
I don't understand what Judy Lane does on that one. Judy Lane, it just made, why is Woodman Drive on here? Woodman Drive's not even there.
Can we, um, I have a question.
Doesn't make any sense to me.
Nope.
I'm very confused. Huh? Are you guys confused as I am?
We can move forward.
Just what we have so many responses on various areas that aren't even in the area that we asked for.
Well, that's what we can ask.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying. So, let's, let's... All right, thank you. I'm sorry, thank you for your patience, we were just reviewing this document. Um, we, yeah, because we received a document earlier this evening that has numbers on here of total responses and of the yeses and the nos. And as we're reviewing the sidewalk survey responses, um, the folks that are considered in here are from other roads that are not Birch Hill or even in the area that we discussed. So, are they included in all the responses that were given to us? I mean, we have Palmer Drive, we have Ellington Road. We have roads in here that aren't in the area that we discussed. Of which, why we're all sitting here going, in Sullivan Avenue? So...
So, Sullivan Avenue is within 2,000 feet of Valley View. And we went and canvassed any potential resident that might want to walk up Valley View that doesn't live on Valley View, because it's a public infrastructure. It's going to be utilized by residents other than those that just live on Valley View. Um, so there's a 2,000-foot radius from Valley View out, and that captures all the streets in the neighborhood. And all the residents that would have a high likelihood of utilizing the sidewalks in that area. And we also parsed out the data, so you can see specifically what the residents voted for that lived on the street. So, the consensus is, overall, that the residents of South Windsor would like to see the sidewalks. The consensus for the residents that live on these particular streets, it's 50-50.
It's 50-50, right. It's 50-50 on Birch Hill, right? And I received emails from folks that are stating no. And I recall our public hearing when we had a lot of folks come in that said no. Um, so, the 2,000-foot radius, where does that come from? Is that your standard, or is that an average standard?
We just try to imagine, uh, you know, the likelihood of folks using the sidewalks in the neighborhood, uh, 2,000 feet is less than a half-mile. Um, you know, so residents that live on Sullivan Ave, that might want to walk up Valley View, down Birch Hill to get to the school, that they will have a path there. You know, I, I want to highlight the fact that you guys were talking about the strategic plan, and on page 11 of that, uh, the second thing that you guys highlighted is installing a mile of sidewalks, new sidewalks, per year. Um, that's also in the POCD. And we also have a resolution where we asked residents if they wanted to, um, fund new sidewalks in town, and that passed.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes, Deputy Mayor King?
So, uh, Josh, so let me start off with this. So, with these, so are these all supposed to be together?
No, sir.
These are the two things that I got? The quality of life issues and the sidewalk priorities? Is that supposed to be with this?
It's just a coincidence that we happen to be talking about them at the same time tonight.
Okay, so, so I guess, so, okay, so my question, so let me talk about this, which is not on the screen right now. Quality of life issues and the sidewalk priorities, these came from where? Do we know?
Um, I believe this is from the POCD survey. Uh, I'm not familiar with that particular survey, but...
From our strategic plan?
No.
No?
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, that, based, looking at the, uh, the firms on the bottom of the page, Slam and PlanaMetrix, they're the firms hired to do the plan of conservation development. So, it's reasonable to assume that that survey was a result of the Planning and Zoning Commission's survey.
Do we know where these came from tonight?
For preparation of that plan of conservation development.
Who do they come from?
Those were included in your packets when this discussion was originally brought onto the agenda. And I just wanted to include them, so you could refer to them again tonight.
So, they were originally in our packet, and you just wanted to give us them again this evening? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, which is fine. I just, so my question...
And I, I just happen to have the...
Yeah, so this is a coincidence?
And this is the strategic plan here, objective B?
Oh, no, 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 I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm familiar with that. I was part of the committee that worked on the strategic plan, so I'm familiar. Thank you, though. So, you know what? I'll just take these as coincidences, um, especially in light of the resolution that we previously just passed in regards to the assistant planner. When this was, was this done this year? Last year? I mean, I see it says, okay.
Yeah, it was done this year. Um, I can't give you the right date.
Okay, okay, so this is recent. But it doesn't necessarily say specific streets. It says, I see it says along major roads, Ellington, Oakland, Sullivan, blah, blah. All right, I'll put those aside for now. So, I guess my question, two questions that I have is, one, so essentially what you're saying to me, as someone who lives on Ellington Road, that if someone came from, I don't know, what would you say is 200? The, the radius? That they could have a decision in regards to if I want a sidewalk on Ellington Road where I live, even though they may not use it? Based on what your radius is? Because I don't, I don't live on Birch, so I wouldn't necessarily say what Birch should do. And so, I'm asking you, based on your radius, is that what you're suggesting? That those residents should also impact?
So, a neighborhood is comprised of multiple streets.
Right.
Right. So, a resident on Felt might be interested in having a sidewalk on Birch so that they can get to Foster.
So, they would be interested. But then that's when we asked the people on Birch if they want it, and they basically said, nah, we're split, 50-50.
The data speaks for itself, yes.
That's what you got, okay. Um, so I guess, so I'm intrigued with all of these different addresses, first of all. But second, and I, and I can't remember, so I apologize, counselors, is, um, did we say what side of the street it was going to be on when we put out the QR code? Or did we just say, we want to build a sidewalk on Birch?
Uh, we didn't specify that. Um, you know, there, there's a lot of developments in complete streets and moving forward. Uh, the state is going to be looking for us with any funding that comes from the state to put sidewalks on both sides of the street.
Yep.
Um, that scenario doesn't, you know, vet here. But economically, we're looking to put it on the north side, because it would be more feasible.
So, if I'm on Birch, it's, it's almost fair to say, perhaps? And I don't know, because I don't know all of these addresses. I know I've walked up and down it and talked to people that said no. However, is it fair to say, whoa, let me back up. Would it not be reasonable to say that 50% live on one side and 50% live on the other side? And the ones that don't have to deal with that sidewalk said, yeah, it sounds like a good idea?
The question wasn't posed in that manner, so I don't think I could articulate that, no.
Okay, and so that probably, okay, so we missed, okay. Uh, I see that the mayor stepped out. Start from my left, Councilwoman.
I just, um, you know, I was looking at the numbers. Here it says the around, my count could be wrong. 13 said yes, 10 said no, that's around 56%. And it seems like the vast majority of Birch Hill residents did not respond to this. There's more non-responders than people saying yes or no. So, I guess most of them did not do the survey. So, I'm guessing that population doesn't, it doesn't matter to them one way or the other, whether we have a sidewalk or we don't have a sidewalk.
It, it's hard to say how somebody would vote that didn't, you know, put an answer in. Um, but as far as surveys go with the town, um, you know, we're almost at 25% response rate. And on average, the town sees about five. So, we've, we've got a lot of engagement with this survey.
Compared to others?
Yes.
Counselor Cabas.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, I'm looking at the report. First of all, we've got a discussion item for sidewalks on Birch Hill and Felt Road. The resolution only mentions Birch Hill, and the survey covers Birch Hill and Valley View. So, we're kind of, we've got a big mix and match here. I do have concerns with putting sidewalks on Birch, because somebody on Ellington Road may one day decide that it's a nice day and I want to take a walk there. I think if this was a street like Main Street, where you can go out there on the weekend and you see plenty of people walking, I have people parking in front of my house and walking up and down Main Street. If we wanted to put sidewalks on Main Street, I think that's more of a destination street for residents. I think that would make a little bit more sense. Um, I talked to three households on Birch Hill Road, all three were nos. So, it's, it's... I understand the survey results, but I also find the, the, the fact that I talked to three out of the 10 and no yeses makes me call it to question their responses, but I don't know how the survey was done, so I really can't say. Um, it just... The, we've got addresses here on Sullivan Ave, on Ellington, on, on Palmer Drive. It's, there's a lot of stuff going into this. It's kind of for 2,000-foot radius, which I'm not sure that, how that comes to be, but, um... I guess, basically, I'm a no on this, only because based upon the people that I've talked to directly, they're, they're not in favor of this. So, um, so, yeah, that's, I, I, I don't...
If I may, just to address a couple of your comments. You know, it's, it's a little bit of a lift to put a survey out like this. In, I think, two or three council meetings, you guys asked me to look into putting sidewalks on Valley View after putting sidewalks on Birch to tie it to Nevers Park. So, just preemptively, knowing how these discussions go, we put that question on Valley View, um, because we were mailing them out anyways. There's a cost associated with that, not only with the postage fees, but the town staff time that it takes to put that out. So, that is why that second question is there. And again, I just wanted to highlight that this is a community, it's a town. Um, you could go and, and parse this as to residents paying taxes for kids that are in school that don't have kids. They're still paying the taxes for the students for, that they don't have kids. You can kind of parlay that into sidewalks. You know, residents that want sidewalks that live on Felt and want to get to Foster might not see eye-to-eye with the residents on Birch Hill, but it's a community and it benefits everybody.
Counselor Sarikisa.
I'm in agreement with your last comment. Uh, it is a community, and respectfully, Counselor Cabaskey, um, I don't necessarily think we are allowed to tell people on Ellington Road that it's not a destination for them. Um, I understand Main Street is beautiful. Grown up there, you know, my entire life going there. Um, but maybe people do think that Birch Hill is a beautiful, a beautiful walk, and we do see, uh, an overwhelming response for yes for everybody else outside. So, um, I agree that, you know, if we're going to bring those issues in about schools, you know, you're paying taxes and your kids aren't in school, we have to treat it, you know, very similar to that. So, um, you know, I see on this, I wish we could put this on the screen, um, but the number foremost out of 14, uh, with 300 responses was providing more sidewalks and walking paths. So, um, I think it is important to listen to the community as a whole. And also, uh, deputy, deputy mayor, and also the folks on the street. You know, we can't, uh, just, you know, localize it to those at hand. It's all the taxpayers. So, I may someday want to, you know, park on Birch Hill and take a walk, who, who knows? So, uh, I, I agree with you on that. We are a community, and, uh, I think everything we deal with is a community issue.
Thank you, Counselor Kozakowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sidewalks are a, basically, it's a public good. Um, it's, it, they're available to everybody. And, um, I think, I like the 2,000-foot radius survey. It's one way to do it, but what that area does is capture, captures the households that could reasonably use that, use a sidewalk on Birch Hill, um, because it's within walking distance. Half a mile is essentially walking distance. So, um, I think it's appropriate to survey the, the larger area and have that result, those results as part of our decision-making process. And within that survey, the, it was a, I think it was almost two-to-one response in, um, in favor of installing the sidewalks. So, I think that's important to, to note. My other, other point I want to bring up is Birch Hill, a sidewalk on Birch Hill. I kind of questioned the, how that became a priority for a sidewalk, um, as opposed to areas that, um, we've been talking about sidewalks for a long time, maybe specifically around the town center area, Deming Street, Buckland, filling in gaps. Coincidentally, I see in the Public Works Department report that there's, um, LEAP money to work on this project, so that's covered. So, I think, so the priority area is being addressed. And now, a project like this is a, kind of a secondary priority, which, you know, is within, within our, you know, scope to, to discuss and deliberate and, you know, take action on. Um, I do appreciate the amount of work that would have to go, that has gone into this process, and, um, all the work... And, um, all the work that's going to have to go. Into the process even further if, um, this, this were to go forward. As, um, as I, as I talked about earlier, um, in ref, making decisions based on the strategic plan. Very, very specifically, that plan talks about constructing, using town funds to construct more sidewalks. So it's very consistent with the plan that was. Developed, you know, or approved by, uh, developed by, um, a volunteer group and of, of citizens and approved by this council. And, um, secondarily, um, the proposal. Putting sidewalks here addresses other quality of life and safety issues. That, um, that are other, um, aspects in the strategic plan. So I, you know, I hesitate going against. Something that has such. Large community impacts, um, in the positive way. When, you know, in, then keeping in mind. Well, I had, yeah, I get, I'll end it there, it's, you know, it, this, this is bigger than Birch Hill. And. That needs to be considered, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor King.
Um, I agree that he is bigger than Birch Hill and I understand. And almost concur with everything there and I'm glad that we are having this discussion for a number of reasons. And I guess for me, I would be less inclined. To vote no for two reasons. One. That we have a fifty fifty from people that live there because they're the ones, unless the law is just different in South Windsor than most places. If somebody, if they don't take care of that. Sidewalk in front of their house and somebody slips and falls. Who covers that, the town or the resident? Mr. Stetson. Mr. Attorney, Mr. Stetson, I, I don't really.
It's, it's.
I, I just, unless the law is different in South Windsor, ninety nine percent of the time.
So if, if there is a slip, trip and fall that is caused by a defective sidewalk, say, uh, panel that's up three inches. The, the liability in that instance falls on the town.
So it is different, so. But no, but because, no, you're saying if there's a defect, my question is, in New England. Where we get a lot of snow outside is climate change. If someone slips and falls on a sidewalk in front of the property because either I didn't de-ice it or shovel it. Who is responsible for that sidewalk in front of a person's house, so if. I have this here, this here, I didn't clear this sidewalk, this is Counselor Kazakowski's house, this is the mayor's house, I didn't clear mine. Who's responsible for that if someone slips and falls? Is the town or is the individual of that house? You would shovel it, thank you, sir.
Um, I'm gonna shoot.
Go ahead, Town Attorney, I see your, I'm going.
Yeah, uh, again, Brian Howing, um, the, uh, general liability, uh, for a sidewalk that is, uh, in front of a residential home. Falls on the residential homeowner, uh, for the mo, for the most part. And generally, there are ordinances around, um, how long a homeowner has to, uh, clear that ice and snow. But in general, if the snow has been there for an unreasonable amount of time and has not been cleared in a reasonable fashion. It would fall on the homeowner, uh, that owns the land that's adjacent to the road. And the sidewalk is an easement that goes across. The, the residence property, but generally, they, the, the resident would be responsible.
Thank you, so, and I'll go back to something I said before, I'm a sidewalk guy. From, you know, cities all have sidewalks, I want sidewalks. However, um, and this goes to my second point, I would probably feel more inclined. If, and that's the reason I asked. On the inquiry, did we say where the sidewalk would be built? Because I think, at least from conversations I've had, that more people have said, I have no problem with the sidewalk if it's connected. To. The current sidewalk, not on the other side of the street, which we went into before, which you so eloquently stated that, yeah, but then there'd be more money. So. I guess that's where I'm really going back and forth on, it's not so much that the sidewalk is built or not, I agree. However, I think that more people are saying, well, we don't understand why you would build it here on this side of the street. And not on the other side of the street. And the last time we asked you that question, it was because, well, it would cost us more money. So I don't know if that's. You know, worth it, I wonder if, if we were to have said. This sidewalk is going to be built here, it's going to connect there. Then everybody would be like, well, that makes sense, yes, as opposed to it being on the other side of the street.
Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Sarikis.
I just want to make a comment about the snow removal, um, I understand the folks that have. Worries about that, but I grew up in this town thirty three years of my life, um, I. Know that we're not giving the residents enough credit, uh, my father raised me to clear out from corner to corner, I grew up on that Siski Farm Road. Uh, if I was out there. Blowing, blowing the snow, uh, if I didn't get my neighbors as well, you know, my father was giving me a stern talking to. Conversely, my grandfather grew up on, uh, Nederweiler Road and I live in his house now. There isn't sidewalks there, but his neighbors had tractors and they would come and clear his driveway, so. I, I believe that the residents in town would do the right thing and see, you know, my elderly neighbor maybe, you know, or somebody that might be disabled. Uh, can't do this, uh, I don't see a whole lot of sidewalks unshovelled or, or, or cleared off when I drive around in the winter time, so. I, I get it, my heart is there for those folks, but, um, uh, again, I think the residents would get their back there.
Thank you, Counselor Kazakowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, question for, uh, the director. Ha, ha, is it? Has it been confirmed if you were to do this project, which side of the street you'd put it on?
No, sir.
Okay, so it's still up to debate. Um, I ca, I understand, um, partially what the trade off is, if it's on the north side, you don't have direct connections, you have extra crosswalks. On the south side, you're talking cutting down mature trees, installing retaining walls and things like that.
Correct.
Could you ballpark estimate how many mature trees and how many linear feet of retaining walls you'd have to construct?
Shooting from the hip, there's going to be probably. Four or five properties that would need retaining walls in front of them and all the trees in that location. So probably. Baker's dozen worth of trees and maybe seven hundred feet of retaining wall.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? I have a couple that I've been writing down while I'm listening to this. Why is the council deciding this? Why and why is Birch Hill, I have a lot of questions. How are we in this situation where the council is deciding where to put sidewalks? Why is there not a sidewalk plan? Is there a sidewalk plan? I don't know. It's been approved, do we have a plan? Do we look at the two thousand feet away from a school, quarter mile? Or a half mile, I don't know what the school requirements say that you can walk within a school distance, if it's quarter mile or a half mile. But why isn't a sidewalk replacement or a sidewalk installation plan presented to the council? We're sitting up here, nine folks that don't live in the area, we're listening to other citizens about one street. One, we have, how many streets in this town? So why is the council deciding this, I don't understand.
Part of the town ordinance, you need to approve the town manager to authorize, um, us to go and expend the funds for new sidewalks.
Have there ever been, uh, to expend this funds to install sidewalks, but has there ever been a sidewalk plan?
There is a draft plan, a conservation development sidewalk plan, uh, but it's, as you can see, it's very difficult to install sidewalks, so it's just a draft plan. I could tell you we're going to install sidewalks on Valley View Drive, but until you guys give us the authorization to do so. Um, it's just lines on a map.
Okay. And so every other road that's going to come up in the future for a sidewalk, you're going to come back to the council and you're going to ask for money for that road?
We have the money, we just need authorization to spend it from you guys.
Oh, okay. Then maybe that should be on the, on the agenda instead, but wha, how did Birch Hill come up to begin with?
Birch Hill checks all the boxes, it's right next to a school. Um, we have the right of way there where we don't have to do land grabs, there's no eminent domain clauses there. The, uh, constructability of the sidewalk on Birch Hill, as I've referenced before, it's low hanging fruit. It's very, very simple sidewalk project and, um. As the director, this is my first go around of trying to get a sidewalk approved in town. I was forewarned that it would be very difficult, um, because this is, this is not a new phenomenon here in South Windsor, this happened on Hayes Road about eleven years ago. And there's no sidewalk there right now, although it is justifiable. So I am just here, um, as a, uh.
We got this.
Employee of the town, um, if we don't put sidewalks here, like I said last time, I'll, I'll come and propose the next location. But without authorization from you folks to the town manager here, we cannot go expend those funds.
So is Birch Hill the only laying, the only low hanging fluke, fruit street in our town? Is that the only one or is that the best one out of all of them?
It's the, the one that I've gotten requests from residents, um.
Oh, there we go.
A few times I've shared those communications with you and, um, and here we are.
Okay. Is there a way that we could have and receive possibly a radius around the schools? Here's your school, what's the radius of the streets that are around the schools? That could use the sidewalks? For the children to watch us go if they so choose? Can we see something like that?
Absolutely. This, this Birch Hill falls on that radius.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Any, thank you, thank you, I, I think I'm looking for the radius map of the radius around the schools where folks can walk to the schools. I, I don't see a, a rush or a need for this at this present time, my opinion. I am receiving more emails about the no's. For this area, folks that are, can't afford snow removal, that are living up there. Fixed incomes and such. And, and I think what we also asked for was for Birch Hill. What was that, you wrote it down, Birch Hill, Felt and Valley View was all we asked for the survey to go out to, so. We're going to have, I, I think I'm going to have to go through this to pull those streets out of there and see what, what we came up with. But, uh, moving forward, any more discussion? Deputy Mayor King.
Yeah, I only have one more comment, just because it's sticking in my head, um, what Counselor Sakusza said in regards to, and I also agree with you. In the sense that, say for example, with, uh. And it's already out there, so I'll say it anyway, say, WPCA, for example. There's an order control issue on Main Street. But everybody's affected by it, which is why fees have to go up. And so everybody has to pay, even though I don't smell it. I see what you're saying, I get it. The same thing, nope, we have people here that are residents that don't have children in the school. I get it. At a certain point, and while I do understand it, I guess at a, at a certain point. When do we consider, and I, and I, I love the fact that you even said something about your family, because I agree with that too, I grew up the same way. Somebody's next door, you, you get it done, and, and that shouldn't be the minor, that's just a minor concern, but it was a concern that people brought up. Um, I guess I'm, I'm still struggling with the fact that, um, as fellow Counselor Kabaski said, that there are people out there that. Whether they filled out a survey or not, as we're all, let's just call it what it is, election time and all that other type of stuff, that we're knocking on doors and people are saying. Yes, I don't want this. And that's where I'm kind of really struggling, I get the fact that we're all part of the same town, this is not so much with you, Mr. Stetson, although. I appreciate you saying you are a town employee, so you get paid to do this, so. You know, I'll just leave that out there, take it as you want, uh, but at the end of the day, you know, when. People are all over us about other fees and such, I do appreciate what you're saying and I just wanted to put that on the record. But I still think we have enough of doubt. That we need to. Get this radius thing perhaps, and then just make sure that we're really, even if we all just, one disagrees. That we're all on the same page about where we're going, especially for the future, because there are going to be questions, so I just wanted to say I agree with you. But I still just have those types of concerns like Counselor Kabaski does.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening, presenting to us, appreciate it. Moving on. Uh, Counselor Lopez. Thirteen C.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, resolution for the installation of sidewalks, sidewalks on Birch Hill Drive on Anfield Road. Whereas the town of South Windsor's residents have requested sidewalks to be installed along the entirety of Birch Hill Drive. And whereas the town council per, um, sec eighty six eighty five of the Code of Ordinances held a public hearing on July seventeenth. Twenty twenty three to obtain public input on the installation of sidewalks along Birch Hill Drive and whereas the residents of South Windsor approved a bond referendum in twenty twenty two. That included funding to repair existing sidewalks and install new sidewalks in town. Now therefore be resolved that the town council per section eighty six dash eighty five of the Code of Ordinances finds. That sidewalks along Birch Hill Road will serve the public need and authorizes the town manager to install sidewalks. Along the entirety of Birch Hill Road in accordance with the town's standards and specifications.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Deputy Mayor King, please.
Yes, um, per even this limited discussion that we had. I would like to postpone this. I'll be honest with you, I was surprised to even see this on here for tonight. And I appreciate even this. However, I really haven't had enough time to, to digest it, to make a, a vote. Uh, where I'm comfortable right now with it, so I'm just asking that we postpone this vote for now until we get that other radius question answered.
Thank you, Counselor Sarikis.
I believe he answered the, he did say that the radius that they do have, it does fit inside, inside that school radius that they currently have. And then, you know, reference back to you Deputy Mayor. I understand the no's and it's, it's hard to go against folks that are saying no about anything in life, but, you know, I, it's also hard to weigh. A no more than, than a yes, um, I think both those folks have, you know, just as much weight in their answer. And we've given, we've given people multiple times now to come here in an open discussion. Uh, we've sent out multiple surveys, this survey that we, these two surveys here, and then we talked about the strategic plan. So, in, in my opinion, uh, the gentleman who just left, um, we have a town staff member that told us, I believe, two meetings ago. That this is always going to be a perpetual issue, uh, when sidewalks come up, there's always going to be. Be people that say no, and if we are the ones that have to approve it and we keep going through this process, I, I don't see how that. These sidewalks are ever going to actually get put down anywhere in town, so, um, if we are waiting to know that much. I'm afraid that it's just never going to happen in the first place.
Counselor Kazakowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, I don't. See the need for postponing it either, I think all the pieces are there, we have a. The Counselor Lidecker requested the survey to go out, I think it was successfully executed and, um, had a response rate. Response that was, um, very much in favor of the proposal. We have our, um, our survey from the, um. Development of the Plan of Conservation Development, um, that shows, um, being in favor of sidewalks. We have our strategic plan, um, that is in favor of sidewalks. We ha, and we have a, uh, Public Works Department that has identified this as a priority, um, in both. There is a, uh, kind of a, a draft sidewalk plan, which was described to us as kind of a, a working plan, um, for sidewalks. And the fact that so much time and, um. Times, that, you know, staff time and resources was, were put into this project. Shows that, you know, the, the department that takes care of our, takes care of our roads and our sidewalks and. Our, you know, are in favor of it, so I, you know, that can't be discounted. So I think we're far enough in the process where, um. Let's either go for it or not.
Any other discussion? Well, I'd like to add the fact that we just received new information this evening. And I'd like to postpone this so I can look over this information, also for the fact that we asked for Birch Hill, Felt and Valley View. We have a lot of other roads that have been included in. We have a lot of other roads that have been included in this, so I'd like to go through this new information that we received this evening. I will be voting for the postponement because I'd like to do and become a better educated, make a better educated decision. Um, and I don't, would also like to see not just of the Birch Hill area a radius, but of all the school area a radius, as I think that's a great place to start with putting in sidewalks would be an area around the schools. There is no doubt that sidewalks are supported on everything that you just talked about, the plans, there's no doubt, there's no doubt. But I truly, truly want to do this the best way that's going to make everyone happy because I don't want to be responsible for tearing down someone's lawn and putting up a brick wall, a retainer wall, a retaining wall. And when I hear that it's a low-hanging fruit, if that's what we have to do and we're destroying someone's front yard and putting up a retaining wall, that bothers me. That bothers me greatly. So if it's gonna go on the other side to see that better, we have a draft, but I would like to see a final, I, I truly would like to see a final plan on the sidewalk installation within our community that the citizens have their input on. That's what I would like to see. So I am, I'm requesting that this be postponed, or I'm, I'm agreeing that this be postponed, um, because we have other information here. So that's all I have to say on that. Any other discussion? Counselor Kaz- uh, Kabaski.
I'd like to second the Deputy Mayor's motion to postpone the vote.
Thank you. Counselor Syracuse.
I just want to make a comment. I, I would love to make everybody happy as well, but there's not a world where we will make everyone happy. Um, there was a fifty fifty split, well, one on either end, uh, on the street and then an overwhelming, resounding yes for the surrounding. So no matter what we do, I mean, there's gonna be some unhappy people out there, uh, and I, that's, that's the wish in my heart too, it's just, this is just not an attainable, uh, goal.
Thank you. Counselor Kazakowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just want to point out that while I don't think we need to postpone it tonight, um, I do say I do respect the process and want to make sure that we do it right, so I will support a postponement if that's what we have to do.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor Alongo?
I just want to say again that thirty-five percent or roughly thirty-five percent say yes, twenty-five percent say no, forty percent did not respond. So if they're fine either way, that adds up to about seventy percent one way or the other, or sixty percent the other way, yes or no. So, um, I feel it's kind of inconclusive about what the Birch Hill residents want. So I would be in favor of, you know, trying to contact that other forty percent who don't care either way and then make up a mind.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, there's a motion on the floor to postpone the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Alongo?
Aye, for postpone.
Counselor Kabaski?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Pendleton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor King?
Yes.
Counselor Kazakowski?
Yes.
Counselor Syracuse?
No.
Six yes, one no.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we've already done thirteen D. Moving on, and that would be Counselor Lopez, please. Uh, thirteen E.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thirteen E, resolution approving nineteen refunds for the total of seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-two cents. Be it resolved that South Windsor Town Council hereby approves a refund of taxes to nineteen South Windsor taxpayers, the total of said refunds being seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-two cents and as more fully described on attachment exhibit A.
Is there a second?
Seven.
Any discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, thank you, the motion carries. There is no passage of ordinance and item fifteen is public input for any matter. Public input for any matter shall not exceed thirty minutes. When recognized by myself, the speaker shall approach the lectern, give their name and address. Speakers shall avoid personal attacks or imputing or alleging in improper motive to any person. The speaker may address the council on any item. The speakers shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to the council on any matter? Second, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to the council on any matter? Third request, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to the council on any matter? Not seeing anyone, we'll move on. Communications from the council, item sixteen. Is there any communications from the council? Not seeing any. Item seventeen A, we've already done. Item eighteen is adjournment. Can we get a motion to adjourn, please?
Adjourn.
Is there, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, thank you, the motion carries. Good night, everyone.